Business is a silent prayer. And if you can stand right after for the pledge of allegiance, I would just ask in our silent prayer, we have Regina King, who was an actress who was here filming a movie, had to take a leave because her only child, her son, passed away suddenly. And she also has relatives here in this area, from my understanding. So if you could say a sonic prayer for her also. Amen. If you could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. So our next order of business is a proclamation recognizing Amy Storey. Oh, let me make a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting.
Second, Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dre House?
Thank you so much. So I can't, well, I sort of can't wait to get to Amy, but I don't want to get to Amy. So we have a proclamation here from the board. And after that, of course, Amy, you can speak. If Mr. Patton, Director Patton, would like to speak, and then we'll take pictures down here. So I'll get started. Whereas Amy Storey has spent more than 30 years working for her community, progressing through the ranks at Hamilton County Job and Family Services. She has always been a dependable, dedicated, proactive problem solver and collaborator. And whereas Ms. Storey started at HC JFS in 1990 and has held many positions since, including leadership roles in quality assurance, children's services and childcare. She also led many initiatives to help the agency adopt new state technical systems and was a viable, a visible participatory leader who mentioned counties of HC JFS employees to become the leaders and emerging leaders we see today. Whereas Ms. Storey was recognized as a Hamilton County Employee of the Year in 2011 and recognized in 2021 for her leadership in addressing secondary trauma in child welfare professionals. And whereas Ms. Storey helped lead HC JFS through the COVID-19 pandemic, taking on the role of interim director, balancing increased customer needs with concern for her more than 800 employees, always reminding them that they are stronger and better together.
And whereas the agency is more data-driven, more invested in diversity, equity and inclusion, more sustainably driven by policy rather than personality, better prepared to meet the challenges of 2022 and better ready to transition to a new generation of HC JFS leaders because of the thoughtful, in-person-centered 30-year leadership of Amy Storey. And whereas Ms. Storey leaves the entire agency and its employees stronger and better.
Therefore, now be proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners honors Amy Storey for her contributions to the citizens of Hamilton County and wishes her well in her retirement. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does hereby proclaim the 31st day of January 2022 as Amy Storey Day in Hamilton County and it's time for all the commissioners. Amy, would you like to come up? Yeah, right there.
I was more nervous walking over here today than I've ever been before. I don't know why. But those who know me know that I'm not normally short on words. They also know I don't typically seek out public praise. But I do appreciate those who have brought the accolades forward to close out my long career at JFS. As is customary in these moments, I want to thank the people who helped me along the way. And looking back over 31 years, it's a short list of strong, competent and visionary women at JFS who afforded me the privilege and the platform to lead. From Johnny Bradshaw and Sandy Smoot, who gave me my first supervisory role in childcare, to Sandy Delaney, Laura Jalas, and finally Moyer Weir, who offered me a seat at the executive table. These women were all visionaries and innovators, and they were deeply passionate about the programs they led and the community they served. They taught and inspired me, and most importantly, they believed in me. But there's a much longer list of men and women at JFS who truly allowed me to lead. They gave me the opportunity to earn their trust and respect. They were supportive peers, knowledgeable mentors, technical teachers and compassionate staff. I'm going to get through this. They taught me about processes, best practices and true service. They offered up ideas and constructive criticism, and they demonstrated care and commitment for one another. They worked tirelessly, they took risks and they lived their passion. These are the staff that will keep JFS moving forward. In closing, there's one more group I need to mention. My best friend and my husband of 28 years, Leland, who's in the audience, and my two incredible, woo, adult children, Avery, who's on screen, and Alden. They celebrated my victories, they supported me in the rough moments, they made sure I laughed often, and they listened to a lot of JFS stories. I'm pretty sure my husband could write a book. I know the old proverb states that behind every great man, there is a great woman. Without being too presumptuous about my own greatness, I say in my case, it was a great man and two great kids who stood beside me every step of the way. Thank you all for the recognition today.
Don't go anywhere, Amy, don't go anywhere. I'd like for your husband to stand there, a lot of men over there. You need to know which one is the husband. Yeah, is there more family there? Yeah, thank you. Director Patton, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Worked with Amy pretty much my entire career. She is probably one of the most authentic, smart, caring, effective leaders I've ever worked with in my life. And she has prepared the organization to take on the next phase of its existence. She's prepared me, she's prepared every leader that she's come into contact with over the course of her career to have a true commitment to the citizens of Hamilton County and to do it in a way that is responsible and effective and data-driven and results-oriented. She is a star, in my opinion. And wherever she leads, wherever she ends up next, they will be happy to have her. Wherever she decides to do in her retirement, I wish her the very best. We are set up and ready to go because of her leadership, her effectiveness and her caring. And I just want to say thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to say a few words, and I'm sure my colleagues would also. But I know when Tim McCartney left, there was no missing link. We just, it was smooth sailing. Whatever I asked you for, or the other commissioners, you were right on the money with it. No matter what time the question came in, in the evening or whatever. But you've just been so professional and so responsive to my needs and the needs of the board. So I just really want to thank you so much. Yeah. Vice President Reese?
Just want to say congratulations, and I have enjoyed working with you. I only had like maybe a year, half a year. But I just want to say that there are so many people, obviously, that you've helped over your career. But I want to speak specifically to the 513 relief bus and just want to thank you because you were the one that brought the technology. I kept saying technology, I didn't know how. And you said, oh, no, 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 you don't have to go back and get scanners. We're going to equip everybody with the right equipment. And you brought the things where we could get on Wi-Fi right there. And so all of the technology things that you added allowed people to get applications right on the spot, be able to get their paperwork, go right in to the database here. And so I just want to really thank you for that. And then also highlight that what we're doing, a lot of times, we just come to work every day and do our work. But I just want to say that the technology that you added to the 513 relief bus, I don't think there's anywhere in the country that has anything like that, that's full service, that has the technology with it. And it's certainly, under your leadership, we were able to do that. So just want to say thank you again.
Thank you, Commissioner Dre House.
Congratulations on your retirement. I too want to thank you for your 31 years of service to the most vulnerable population in this county. The work that is done over at JFS impacts lives in a really crucial way, often when people are at their most vulnerable, especially kids and especially seniors. So the work that you've done is critically important and that you were willing to step into a space to lead the agency at a time that was very challenging. I mean, we're still in the middle of this pandemic, and you said yes, when I think others would have scratched their head maybe and said, oh, maybe not. I'm kind of on my way out, good to go. And you said, I will do it, there's a need and I'm going to fill the need, and you did. And it really meant a lot to all of us to have you, with that attitude, enter that space as the director and guide the organization. So thank you, thank you for your willingness to do that and all your years of service to the county.
Thank you. Jeff, would you like to make a comment?
Certainly. I've known Amy for several years. I knew her more in the operational role when she was, when we had Moyer and then Tim McCartney there. And I had the opportunity to appoint her as interim director after Tim left. And it is, I can just say, it has been just an absolute honor and a privilege to get to know Amy better as a person and to watch her work in the JFS environment. She is just such an incredible person, such a talented professional. She's passionate about the JFS organization, she's passionate about the work of JFS. She is passionate and empathetic with the employees of the organization and just so incredible, I think Michael said, just so incredibly smart and talented. I mean, the type of person, when you're in the room, you realize that you're in the room with a different level of intelligence sometimes. That's just how smart Amy is. So, I mean, I think it even said in the proclamation that, you know, talking about leaving the organization better than when you found it. And nothing, no one personifies that better than what Amy did. Commissioner Dre House, you mentioned, you know, others would have scratched their heads. I think there probably was a little bit of heads, Amy scratching her head saying, why, why did I do this? But all the more just reason to laud what she did over this time, especially during these times of COVID and taking the organization where she did. So she's, she's going to be absolutely incredibly missed in the organization. But I know whatever she decides to do from here on out, she's going to be an incredible success at it. So Amy, congratulations.
Absolutely. We're going to come down and take a picture with you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another person who is going to be leaving the county. Commissioner Dre House, would you like to get that rolling?
Thank you. Actually, she's already left the county. So my Director of Public Affairs, Fatima Ba, is literally at the airport right now, leaving the country for her next adventure. She interned with the UN previous to coming to my office and is now taking a job with the UN over in the Democratic Republic of the Congo. And so it's a new adventure for her, very different, I think, than the work that she's done for me. But I did want to recognize all the work that she did on behalf of my office, but really on behalf of the constituents of the county. She was fantastic, and I, we've, and thank you for your support of the resolution or proclamation that we did. I'll read a bit of it. She said she was going to, she couldn't watch from the airport. When she got overseas, she was going to watch the transcript. I'm like, okay, so I want to get this right. So whereas, Fatimata is her full name. So whereas Fatimata Ba started her service with Hamilton County on July 12th, 2019 as the Public Affairs Director for Commissioner Denise Dre House. And whereas Ms. Ba handled many complicated tasks with diligence and helped organize the work of the office with professionalism and great skill. And whereas Ms. Ba was the lead for the Commission on Women and Girls, spending many hours working to organize the group, get a program coordinator hired, design a new logo, and generally promote the work of the Commission on Women and Girls. And whereas Ms. Ba worked to resolve constituent issues, especially related to jobs and family services, with compassion at a time when people were in need of services at a vulnerable time in their lives. And whereas Ms. Ba was well-known and well-liked throughout the county team as a result of her friendly disposition and positive approach to the job. And whereas Ms. Ba has been an asset to the citizens of the county in addition to being a critical part of the Dre House team and will be sorely missed, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners does thank Ms. Ba for her dedicated service to the citizens of Hamilton County and our region and wishes her well in her future endeavors. And we further proclaim January 20th, what is today, 27th? January 27th, 2022 is Fatima Ba Day in all of Hamilton County. I know she's watching, thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, Fatima, for everything you've done for the county and for myself personally. So thank you, Madam President.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, if I may. Just, once again, so professional, she helped every office that she could. I mean, if we were short in some way and we needed assistance, she would come in. And I always had the most positive attitude, so she will be sorely missed.
President, I just wanted to say, all of her work with the Women and Girls, I know Commissioner Dre House certainly led this effort in having a Women and Girls Commission. But then Fatima took it and kind of made sure all of the nuts and bolts and bringing all the women in and keeping us on track. So just want to really thank her for that. And what you just talked about, I mean, my goodness, the UN, I mean, that's huge, that's huge. So congratulations.
Absolutely. So our next item on the agenda is probably comments, but I'm going to digress a little bit. And we're going to change the agenda for a moment. Actually, Bridget, you can, it's after 1:15, you can sort of open up and let Mr. White come in. And we'll talk about who he is. There is someone who is anxiously awaiting to speak with us. And I will speak with him in a few minutes. But I just want to say a few things that we are excited to congratulate and celebrate that Cincinnati Bengals are on their way to the AFL Championship game to be played against Kansas City Chiefs. Can I, security, if you could please bring our last playoff ball, that would be great. Okay, thank you so much. I want to make sure that Mr. White is able to see this, even though he has one of his own. Hello, Mr. White, how are you? Good. I'm going to get to you in one moment. And throughout my tenure, I've always had the mindset in the heart that no matter what, that we would leave no one behind. As you know, youth is extremely important to me and also for the whole board. And I love planning parties and wearing our gear. You see everyone with our gear on, and we're ready for the Bengals to win this game. I'll have, I'll let you speak in a minute. But I love it all, you know. I just want to give an example. I don't know if anybody saw the movie called The Blind Side, and it was about a young man who was homeless, a black man, one of 13 children, and had a drug-addicted mom. The reason why I'm bringing this up is because we came to an agreement, and we'll talk about it in a minute, about what we would do for a friendly political wager. And it was ironic that we thought of almost the same thing, the same entity, to be a part of this wager. But anyway, Michael was his name, who bounced around from home to home because he did not have the support that he needed in his home. And so throughout my tenure, I've had a mindset, as I said, that we're not going to leave anybody behind. So when we had the opportunity to talk to Mr. White about some of his ideas, it just fell right in line with what the county wants to do. And so it talks about Mike on The Blind Side, if you haven't seen it before, goes from home to home to home. And finally, he finds someone or a family that will support him and give him the mentorship and the courage and the time with him and let him know that he's more than a number, that he's important to us and each one should reach one. So sometimes we think, well, you know, they've been in the system and maybe we should not be involved with them, they've made some mistakes. But I firmly believe everybody makes mistakes and we need to do all we can do to encourage the young people and the older people as they go on, to let them know that life is not all about problems, but you can be successful. So I'm going to introduce you. This is Frank White Jr., and you can tell everybody who you are and where you are.
Well, my name is Frank White Jr. I'm the county executive of Jackson County, Missouri, home of the Kansas City Chiefs. I'm hoping to be able to say the world's champions, Kansas City Chiefs, pretty soon. But I just want to thank the commission for allowing me to be in the room with you today and President Summer Adumas for reaching out to us for this friendly wager that's going to benefit the kids of our community. And just want to just regress a little bit, just say, I just want to thank President Summer Adumas for your work in advocating for domestic violence survivors and also for your work in achieving the achievements that you've been able to achieve, being the first African-American commissioner in the history of Hamilton County and also being the first African-American woman commissioner in the entire state of Ohio. And we share some similarities because I'm the first ever African-American county executive in the history of Jackson County. So we know what the price we have to pay to break those ceilings. And, but I just wanted, I just, I just really want to really just say that you have a friend here in Jackson County, always, regardless of how the game comes out.
Oh, that is awesome. And you see before you, we have three women on our board, which is the first time ever also. So you know, we are doing a lot of great things. So it was just really strange, we hear often about, you know, the mayor of Cincinnati, the mayor of Kansas City, and I'll say, I know that the commissioners, what you call them legislators, they have to do a lot to make this whole event happen this Sunday. And so I said, I'm going to, as you said, reach out to you because if we had to do it here, it's just so much work that will go into it along with our administrator. But I'm just so happy that you're preparing the field for us to win. Yeah, so just like we like it. And so I guess I'll go on and talk about our wager. Our wager was, let me give you some compliments because your staff called right back and they were excited about it. And then as I spoke to you yesterday on a Zoom call, your staff mentioned for your wager, you would like to make sure that we choose African-American business to provide food to your group, which you'll talk about in a minute. I'm going to say our group is called the Youth Advocate Program here. And so that's where you will be sending the food to us. And that program deals with young people who have been in the juvenile justice system and are trying to do better, pull themselves up from their bootstraps. And so you guys picked another organization similar to that. You want to talk about that?
Well, yes, ours is called Youth Ambassadors. And they are an educational nonprofit employment program that really just teaches kids about the social academic challenges that they have to face and the critical role in empowering these youth to have a voice and be an active participant in their communities. And so that kind of gives us some similarities there. And we really have focused on the east side of Kansas City, which is predominantly African-American. And I grew up on the east side of Kansas City. And in 1968, after Martin Luther King was assassinated, we had the riots that followed, and the east side never really rebounded from that. And that's why when I had the opportunity to do something for the east side of Kansas City, things I really kind of focused on was, was healthcare and the ability to have access to affordable healthcare, preventive screenings and so forth. And so we started the I Health in KC East Side Program, which these ambassadors are a part of. And with that program, what we try to do is go door-to-door. We try to educate the residents on the vaccine itself, but also give them access to critical preventive screenings that they don't usually have access to, such as diabetes, hypertension, also colon cancer. This year, we're adding inform mortality and screenings for HIV, DSTs and those type things. So, so we want to expand this program, and I've recommended $10 million this year to that program. So what we want to try to do is create a total healthcare infrastructure so that we give residents of the east side of Kansas City access to the healthcare that they deserve and also the healthcare that they need.
Thank you so much for that. Sounds like you have some great programs going on. Just wanted to let you know that we have your shirt ready. To you after the.
In return, I have yours. You know, it's got, it's got our favorite quarterback's name on the back.
Okay.
And I have standing next to me our favorite tight end that you guys got to watch pretty close. And I see the gentleman in the room with Chase One on his back. That's one gentleman that we have to watch very close. But it should be, it should be a great game. And I think, I think regardless of who wins this game, I think the children in both cities and both counties are going to benefit. And I think that we're just excited to, you reached out to us and given us the opportunity to share our goodwill and make sure that, you know, that you, all the commissioners have a friend in Kansas City.
Well, that's great. And just want to make it clear that no county money is being used in this process. Yeah, so I just wanted to let, really, the media know. Okay, so I'm going to open it up though for my colleagues if they'd like. Okay, so I'm going to open it up though for my colleagues if they'd like to say a few words. Vice President Reese.
Just want to say thanks for joining us. And I want to thank President Dumas for putting this forward. I think it's a great cause and probably first time we've had a county type of wager. So that's great. And I just want to let you know that we, we've got the, I call them the Bayou Boys. I went to college at Grambling State University, so they were LSU boys. And so we've got, you know, Joe Burrow, I got to show you my number now. And, and, and of course, Jamar Chase. And so we're going to bring all kind of hot sauce to Kansas City and Gates won't be able to help you. We're going to win. People know Gates Barbecue. Gates will not be able to help you on this one.
Gates, Gates has a hot mouth and original, so we.
We're going to bring some hot sauce.
Right. So just a little history on Gates Barbecue. It's, it's, they're celebrating their 75 year anniversary this year. Well, it was in 2021. So they've been around a long time, the institution here in Kansas City. And, and it's been my favorite from the time I was old enough to afford the french fries. But it's, it's really a great asset to Kansas City. And I'm, I'm just really happy to be able to share it with you.
Yeah, I spent a lot of money there at Gates when we came. But thank you so much for this partnership. And again, it's about the kids winning. So we appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Yeah, very quickly, just want to thank Commissioner Dumas for bringing this. This is, this is good fun. Looking forward to try, and maybe I can get a little bit of that food when you have to send it. No, it's for the kids, but maybe we can Bogart a little bit for the county commissioners. But yeah, so thank you for participating in this. You've got my condolences for how it's going to go on Sunday. Yeah, we're, we're going to beat you guys. But, and we feel pretty confident about it, no offense, but.
I totally, I totally get it. But I think if you watched the game last week, you'll know that we're never out of a game. And early results in the, in the season don't really equate to this time of the year. So we're at our best.
I think that same thing can be said of the Bengals. We are never out of the game.
We're at our best. We're at our best right now. So you'll never see a more exciting game. That's a great game to build off of. And I think the whole city is, is crazy wild. And I think they were so excited that when they beat Buffalo, that I think our fans and what we call Chief Kingdom have donated over $200,000 to the Buffalo Children's Hospital. So they, they're really excited about this football game. And it should be, it should be a great, great game.
That's great. Thank you for doing it. And thank, and thank you for focusing on kids.
And no matter what, what, no kids will lose because we have a sponsor that has stepped up to sponsor jerseys for, for the youth. So that's a great thing. So. And that noise level that you guys are, they actually, you actually broke the Guinness Book of Records for being the noise in his stadium in the NFL for two straight, no, not the fourth, 2014, 2017. But we're ready for all of that. So we'll see what happens and I'll talk to you Monday probably, okay? Kind of relax and get over the loss, okay?
We will definitely have another conversation. I look forward to it. So again, thank you for reaching out. And we'll, we'll look forward to sitting down and enjoying some delicacies from Cincinnati and.
Let's cut him off. Okay, take care.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, um, next item, we'll go to public comments. And I have a few here. Is anyone on Zoom, Bridget? Well, I was asking, is anyone on? Okay. 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 So raise your hand if you're on and you'd like to speak. We, I do have two cards. Sean Callen. Okay, okay. And Tim Burke is also here for the public hearing. Okay, thank you. Hello, Tim, how are you? Good retirement time for you, huh? Okay, let's move on then. I will not have any more comments, but I'll move to Vice President Reese if you have. But maybe I'll make one comment. As we look at the by leave as it relates to our, our resolution that's on the by leave, my comment will be that I am in sort of support of the resolution coming forth. And I don't have any additional comments other than the, the scope of work that we had talked about. We certainly can review that and make sure it's meeting the needs of our, of our county. So I just wanted to address that by leave. So Vice President Reese.
Yes, Madam President, I do have a comment about the by leave, but I'll wait till we get to the by leave. But before that, I just want to, first of all, I said, I think on Tuesday, and I got the call on Sunday night from a fan, taxpayer that wanted us to look at, could we have a watch party at Paul Brown Stadium? It's a publicly funded stadium. And you, as you hear, Kansas City is going to have their fans. And I think we've got the greatest fans in the whole world. And we hadn't been here in 31 years. And could we do something like that, that's a place that could hold thousands? And when we have these game days, we bring so many, we bring almost 60,000 people to the stadium. And that gets people to go for dinner and afterwards they have drinks. And it just brings more, more people. We, we fill up some hotels. And so I thought it was a good idea. And I always say, if people got something, I'll bring it back. And so I did mention that to the administrator on Monday. And then I mentioned it here. And we were trying to see if that could be done. And, and I really think that with all hands on deck, something like that could have been pulled off and maybe have a canned goods that could go to the Free Store Food Bank. So it has a, a purpose. And so I wanted to, we, we got the information, I think, yesterday that I got saying that we weren't able to get the logistics together. And I know we have a stadium director for the county. And we've got a sheriff's department that takes care of a lot of safety stuff. And I, I, I'm like the fans. I'm disappointed that we weren't able to pull this kind of thing off because just like they're going to be, everybody running to Kansas City with all of that media attention. It would have been so cool to scan back to Paul Brown Stadium and look at our fans. And since that time, I had so many calls that came in. My office was flooded with calls of people who, who were excited and wanted to do it. We even got calls of people in Kentucky and Columbus, somebody in Chicago dating. They were someone, they wanted to book their hotel rooms to come down. So it would have brought tourism attraction. It would have been putting us on the national stage as well, showing the fans. It would have been bringing additional folks into town and downtown. It would have had a great charity component on it with the Free Store Food Bank. And I just thought it was a, a great idea. I don't want the people that brought the idea to feel like they've been defeated. Because again, you know, when we look at the contracts for the stadium, it has so many county days, so many special event days. And I really want us to start using those days. I want to increase the access to taxpayers to be able to be, you know, this is, this is the people's stadium. This is their stadium. It's not our stadium or any individual. It's the people's stadium. And I just thought that was a great idea. And I brought it forward. And like I said, the administration, I guess, looked at it and said that we could not pull it off. But I think we need to start getting ready to pull stuff like this off. Because we're going to have a, a team that's going to be big time. We're trying to bring big time things to town. We want to be big time. We want to bring more money here. We want to get a better bank for our tax dollars. And we've got so many things down there that have to get funded. I mean, we got, we got parking garages. You know, we don't took debt out on it. We got to get paid. We've got all kinds of things. And even on game days, we do reimbursement for the expenses. So when they say, well, how can we get people to work? I got people calling me and say, hey, I would have worked, I would have been ready to go. So I don't want, again, it wasn't my personal idea. But as I did, it came from a fan, came from a taxpayer. And I said, I wanted to explore it. But I would like to put on the table now for us to look at, our administration says we need more time. So I look next, I believe the Bengals are going to the Super Bowl. I'm going, I'm going to put it out there. I'm, I got, I'm going to have to put the faith out there that we're going to the Super Bowl. And I just think we should start now for whether it's a watch party or a celebration, let's start getting everybody together now. So we don't say that we didn't have enough time. So I wanted to put that out there, Madam President. And I wanted to thank the person that called our office and left a message. I want to thank the hundreds of people that's been calling and all the people that's been tweeting and all of those things. You're absolutely right. It is the people's stadiums. And I want to get greater access to the people inside of these publicly funded facilities. So just wanted to say that, Madam President, and appreciate today. And I'm just excited today that we're all, you got us all, we ready to go. I think we might can sub in the game or something. You, you, both of you were what, quarterbacks? We're ready to back up Joe Burrow and Mike can do a little dance in the end zone. So we are united in getting behind our Bengals. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll be an extra Bengale. Old Bengale, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. I'm going to keep my comments brief because I know we have a public hearing coming. Just one thing that's been in the news a little bit that, that we did, that I, just as a reminder, back in the spring, the Commission on Women and Girls came before, and I, again, another shout out to Fatima Ba. But the commission came before us and we endorsed and approved of a resolution related to period products in public buildings. And so we all said that we supported that. We wanted to make sure that the county kind of led the way in providing access to period products in our buildings. It's an equity issue. It's a health issue. And so we passed that resolution. We now have an estimate from the administration about putting dispensers in these restrooms and providing the products. So that project is moving forward. So just as a reminder to the commission, I wanted to let everybody know that hopefully here within the next month or so, we'll have that finished out. And I've been contacting the elected officials throughout the county also to make sure that they're aware of that. And one other thing I was asked about N95 masks and what the federal government is doing to allow for these masks in, in each community. And again, this issue of access was brought to my attention. And so I contacted Greg Kesterman, the Health Commissioner for Hamilton County, who is going to be out and about this weekend with a mobile unit. And they're going to have four cases, which evidently is 800 N95 masks available at where they're, they're going up to Col Rain. There's a Nepalese population that has received a vaccination. And my understanding is they're going to do a follow up up there to make sure everybody's got enough shots and gotten, gotten themselves boosted. And so we will be providing through public health, I should say, public health will be providing these N95 masks. They will be available as they move around the community. And thanks to Nick Crossley over at the EMA for making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, can we wait on your report since you have a resolution? Yeah. And we'll go straight to our public hearing. People are waiting for that. Who's leading the discussion on that? Thank you.
Good afternoon, Brian Snyder, Development Services Administrator. This is a public hearing for a zone change in Green Township. It's case green 2021-08. Believe we have some slides to go along with this. The zone change request here is from a residential, a partial property that's partially zoned retail, but also partially zoned, single family residence to a planned retail district. So they're going to take the whole property and develop it for commercial use. That is the, the subject of the zone change, just the rear part of the property. Which you can see with the A on it, that's a resident, single family. So that, that's the rear portion. That's part of the, the zone change from residential to retail. And then the front part would just be part of the overall planned unit development for this zone change. Briefly, this is the plan. The proposal is for a Dunkin' Donuts on this property. The house that was formerly on this property has been removed. This is adjacent to a commercial strip center, which you can see kind of to the right.
Excuse me, can you pull your mic up a little bit? I'm having a little trouble in the back with the sound.
So to the right is a commercial strip center that has been there for a number of years. To the left is one single family home. It's the last single family home on this stretch of Harrison Avenue. On the other side of that is a Hampton Inn that's under construction. A couple of pictures of the site. This is the property. The house, as I said, has been removed. On the right side of the screen, you can see the last single family house that I was referring to. And in the background, you can kind of see the green wall and the construction of the Hampton Inn. This is just a couple of other pictures of the site. Again, of the house that's remaining and the Dunkin' Donuts would go between the strip center on the right and the house on the left. And then just a picture of the rear of the property where you can again see the Hampton Inn under construction. So this, there's a couple of other slides that I'm not going to get into unless we have questions. This is the, the main plan for this project. The only person that, that is actually adjacent, that lives directly next to this property has submitted a letter in support of this development and actually supported waiving some of the boundary buffering and setback requirements that are in the zoning resolution. That reflects the plan that was submitted. This was reviewed by staff and recommended for approval. It's consistent with the Green Township Land Use Plan, Hamilton County Thoroughfare Plan and several of the, or the majority of the zoning resolution for Hamilton County. The Regional Planning Commission did review this in December and unanimously recommended approval. The zoning commission did as well. The Green Township Trustees held a public meeting and recommended approval unanimously of this request. So it is before you today with a recommendation of the zoning commission officially for approval with conditions, modifications and variances. And I can go into any of those or answer any questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments as it relates to the zone change? I know she, you, you have any questions?
Questions, wanted to hear from the speakers. I might have something.
Okay, there's some speakers on there for that. Okay. I know we have two here, but my understanding, unless they were needed, they didn't want to speak. Okay, Tim, did you want to go on and speak? Because they were telling me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just don't go too far.
Madam President, members of the commission, just to point out that with me today is my partner, Sean Callen, who has been principally responsible for the legal work on this matter. And also Mike Bernhaus, who will be the operator and owner of the donut shop on the site. Dave Hummel, who is the owner and developer of the property is here, as is Scott Huber from Abercrombie, who has been the project engineer. All of us are available to answer any questions. But we are in full support of the recommendation as it came out of the Rural Zoning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I kept hearing unanimous, unanimous, which is a little unusual sometimes. So that, that was good to hear. And then there's only one property that we're concerned about, but we're not because he sent a, a letter in agreement. So.
Correct. And there were no other residents in any of the public hearings.
Right. Vice President Reese. Okay, Commissioner Drehouse.
I, I want to thank all of you for making it easy for us because it sounds like the public hearings were had at the local level. There was plenty of opportunity for folks to come in and, and, you know, talk about the project. Sounds like everybody likes Dunkin' Donuts out in the Green Township. So I thank, thank you again for the diligence, bringing it forward. We don't always have this kind of diligence and it's very helpful. Thank you.
And I'm glad it was all unanimous because I was thinking I might have to recuse myself because Dunkin' Donuts I love. But anyway, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearings. Second, Commissioner Summer Dumas. Yes. Commissioner Reese. Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it.
I will have a resolution for you, Ms. Chairman, on the, sorry, Ms. President, on the next, or on the agenda two weeks from today.
Okay, great. Uh huh. Thank you. So we will go back to Jeff Aludo for your report or comments, motions, resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't have any other by leave discussion items today. I do, there is one by leave on your agenda that was, that was the subject of, of discussion at staff meeting this past Tuesday. This is by leave number one in your packet. Resolution in support of coordinating with the City of Cincinnati on redevelopment strategy for the downtown Convention Center District. This is, the resolution is essentially a resolution that would coordinate and cooperate with the City of Cincinnati to engage 3CDC in a planning process related to the Convention District. Work would focus primarily and initially on seeking a developer for a headquarters hotel in light of the, the acquisition, the demolition of the Millennium Hotel property. But would also recommend a, or would also include a broader planning effort related to the entire Convention District related to land use and future Duke Energy Center, Convention Center improvements. With the understanding that that work would be guided by the county and the city with reports occurring from 3CDC to the county administrator and to the city manager, the City of Cincinnati with reports provided quarterly. provided quarterly. And I think our resolution says at least quarterly to the, to the Board of County Commissioners to make sure that there continues to be policy guidance, direct policy guidance on, on this project because of obvious, the obvious importance of it from a, from multiple policy perspectives to, to the board and also to our friends over at City Hall as well. So with that, Madam President, I'll turn it back to you, other than just to say that the resolution directs that, including the, some of the things I just mentioned, the resolution also directs that that the county administrator be authorized to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Board, City, and 3CDC, guiding the efforts, which is consistent with a, with the scope of work and inclusive of the conditions and policy direction within the resolution for a term not to exceed four years. So that is the, a brief summary of the resolution, and I'll turn it back to you for additional comments.
Thank you so much. I'd like to read the title of the resolution that we're discussing. Resolution in support of coordinating with the City of Cincinnati on a redevelopment strategy for the downtown Convention Center District. So at this point, I'd open up for discussion. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. This issue is very important and critical because we're going to be doing something that could be transformational. And I may not have the most popular position in the room, but the things that I'm bringing and the things I'm bringing are not personal, but just what I've experienced over 20 years of being elected official, dealing with 3CDC from their inception to now. Coming from the tourism industry, and we all have our strengths in different industries that we bring to the table. I bring the tourism one to the table. I've actually pitched conventions to bring them here in the toughest times. And I've been a part of the expansion of a convention center. I was around with this last expansion, which was tough. And I've also been Assistant Director for the whole state for tourism. So when I look at these issues, I might look from a different type of lens. The resolution that we have in front of us today is not necessarily my, my problem. My problem is on the scope of work. And I met with the administrator yesterday, and I've met with him before. And the scope of work has not changed. And that is the actual, when you get to the scope of work, that's the contract. That's where the rubber meets the roll. And even the administrator told me when we first started it, he said, it's the scope of work that you, you know, you gotta get in because it won't come back to us. We'll get some updates, but we won't be seeing this again until it's time to pay for something. So there's a couple of things that I think we have a great opportunity if we do it correctly. And it's gonna be hard to do that. I, I'm, I won't be a rubber stamp on it. Because we won't see this type of public project of this size probably for a long time. Too often, we've done these public projects, when I say we, not saying this board, but the elected officials. And we always seem to come up short when it comes to African-Americans. We say we're gonna have inclusion. We say we gonna try. We put a goal out there. But for some reason, we keep coming up short. And then the community gets upset and gets to moving. Now, if we look at this in dollars and cents, African-American conventions are the top conventions, one of the top, if not the top, conventions in bringing conventions to this county. And we have them kind of as a afterthought in the scope of work, not, not necessarily the resolution. But the resolution says the attached scope of work. I'm also concerned, as a county, we have not been successful in inclusion. And we're going to turn this over to the county administrator, no offense, and the city manager. And when we look at our own numbers, we've had 2.5% inclusion in a lot of times. In the fourth quarter, we had $52 million total spend. And minority businesses, that's every minority group, we had 2.1, 2.5%. When I first got here, we had one quarter, we spent $16 million to upkeep these stadiums. And we only have $1,400 that went to minorities. So we need to have some type of watchdog on this topic because we haven't been able to be successful in making sure that as we collect taxes and on tax day, the tax bills are going out. Everyone's equal on tax day, but then we unequal every other day. And we can't have taxation without participation. So when I also look at the scope of work, is that's the part that I'm really focused on. I'm interested in a full partnership, a full partnership from every single level, not necessarily just inclusion. Inclusion suggests you an afterthought, we gonna try to squeeze in. But a partnership from the, the development, co-lead development, to the ownership of hotel, to the ownership of the properties that we're talking about, to the programming, every single phase, architects, real estate, all those components, all the way down to the carpet. And when I said this the other time, I know people say, well, what is she talking about? Even in parking, 3CDC owns a lot of parking. Now, 3CDC, I have nothing against 3CDC, but I don't want to create monopolies. I've said that with the Port Authority. And I'm starting to see a monopoly go all, go on with non-elected bodies. They don't have to, they don't have to face the voters. We gotta face the voters. And the voters and the taxpayers gotta pay for it. But they never have to face them. So when you look at 3CDC, they own almost all over the Rhine. They've got Fountain Square. They got parking at Fountain Square. They own half of the street we own. From Kroger's all the way to our building. And I don't know, our building might be on, be in the plan next. They also have parking surrounding Convention Center. And I think I mentioned Washington Park. But we don't want a monopoly. We want to open this thing up. And we want some for-profit businesses to be able to own some of these things. In addition, Port Authority, they got a monopoly. They, they over, we've talked about that already. Over the land bank, they got, they got, they don't have to pay taxes because of the land bank. And they, they got a lot of properties. And so people are concerned about this quote-unquote monopoly. When I asked, do they have experience as 3CDC doing any convention district? They said, no, we don't have experience. But we have somebody who would have experience on it. And that really concerned me. The other thing is, I pulled up, I saw in the Business Courier with the Millennium Hotel, which the Port Authority, I guess we gave to the Port Authority to do. That was some concern about that millennium. I still have concern about $39 million. And we gonna end up with green space. I am not against a convention hotel. I come from the convention world. I'm very familiar. We've got to get a convention hotel. But this scope of work goes beyond a convention hotel. And I wanted it to say, convention hotel would be phase one. And then you gotta come back to us if you want to do some other stuff. But we don't have that necessarily in the scope of work. The other thing is where they're going to put the convention hotel. I learned that the Port Authority owns the parking lot. They're the owner of the land. And so that raised concerns with, I believe, the African-American Chamber. There was an article in 2019 on their land that they own. And they asked for a 360-degree ownership model, which is what I'm talking about. In the Business Courier says, in a statement, now remember, the Port Authority still owns the land where we're talking about putting a hotel. And that's not the millennium. That's the parking lot. And 3CDC would just be the quarterback, but they have to deal with who? The owner of the land. And so the Port Authority, when they asked them about this 360-degree ownership model, which I agree with. Here was a statement. In a statement, Port CEO Laura Brunner said, there will be no equity in the hotel from the private sector because the current plan calls for the port, calls for the port will own it. The port would own it and issue tax-exempt bonds sold to pay for it. Now, you, they may tell me that ain't what it's gonna be today. I need to see that in writing. So I think there's been a lot of conversations about what we like to do, what we want to do. But for me, Madam President, with my experience in dealing with 3CDC for 20 years, my experience as a tourism expert that actually brought conventions and know what the conventions want, as my experience who helped create the CFA, we didn't have a CFA. We created the CFA. And my experience at expanding a convention center, I am uncomfortable today to move forward with this particular resolution. My goal is to see the contract and see what does the contract say. And what, if I see in the contract, it makes sense, and we got this ownership in writing, then I'm forward. We have seen too many times taxpayers have been sold one thing. We see it sometimes on levies. We sold one thing and then they say, well, they advertised that, but it ain't in the writing. We see that with issue seven. They said they advertised it, but it wasn't in, it ain't in the contract. We've seen that with other public projects. Well, they advertised it to the people, but it ain't in the contract. So I am going to abstain today. I wanted to be known that I, when they write the articles, you know, commission voted for it, that's fine. But please, I did not vote for this today. But Madam President, if they come back with the things that they have verbally expressed to different people and put it in a document that is binding, that's a contract, that has ownership, majority, minority ownership from every single level, not just the concrete, you do concrete and you gone. Not just the painting, you paint and you're out. I'm talking about this thing is gonna be around for 30 and 40 years. I want an ownership model. And there's other places that have done it. And I'd like to see that happen here. I had asked for a national search of somebody who's already done it, but I've been told we don't have time for that. But I'd like to see that contract because of my past experience. 3CDC came in with a whole lot of promises. And we got people mad about gentrification. Came out a whole lot of promises. And they admit there are no black owners of the buildings. They're the landlord. But if they raise the rent, they out. And then my last thing is, Madam President, I don't want it to be on personalities. Because that's why I don't make it personal. Personnel, all of us could come and go. We come in with, like me, I did 3CDC, then I, I was gone from the city. And they got a new council. Someone could leave 3CDC and move on. Our contract is with 3CDC. No matter who's leading, no matter who's in charge. So we'd have to make sure that that is tightened up. So that, those are my reasons for today, not moving forward and for me, moving forward with this. But if I see something in a contract, I'm willing to consider it. But I was told that we don't have enough time to get that contract done.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. And I did express most of my support for this on Tuesday. I do want to reiterate that from my vantage point, we, we have been working on this part of the county and the city for a number of years, trying to redo the Convention Center District so that we can attract conventions to Cincinnati. And potentially expand the Convention Center. And when you look at the studies and you look at our competitive set, the one thing holding us back has always been the Convention Center Hotel. And so, and in study after study has proven this. And so we finally have gotten control of that property and the hotel. We've gotten control of the property across the street. And it, it is a moment in time where we can move forward now with a collective vision with stakeholders, including the City of Cincinnati, to try to revision the Convention District and draw people in conventions into this area in a way that we just have not had the opportunity before because we just didn't have control of the properties in question. So I am supportive of this approach. It's a, it's a collective approach. I want to thank the City of Cincinnati, who also passed this very similar, if not the same, resolution with the same scope of work. It was unanimous vote over there. And I am grateful that they did add some language to the resolution to make it more inclusive. And I thank them for that. We've got a couple of additional clauses that were added. And so I think it does clarify the intent that has been expressed by this commission and by city council that we want 3CDC to do this work in a very inclusive, intentionally diverse way, which is something that we've over and over again said that we're committed to. And I think the message has been heard loud and clear. So thank you to 3CDC for working with us on that. There's one thing I would like to mention related to the resolution and the scope of services. So we had talked at, or rather, I had talked at the last meeting about the frequency by which 3CDC would report to both the city and the county. And in the resolution, Madam President, as you pointed out, it says they are to report no less frequently than quarterly to the Board of County Commissioners. And, which I, I agree to, and I think I, I want to support that because I was a little concerned that if it were only quarterly, if something were to come up, especially related to the hotel, and we were only doing quarterly meetings, that that wouldn't be often enough. In the scope of work, there is a similar clause that says, as lead developer, 3CDC will report directly to the county administrator and city manager and provide quarterly updates. I'm wondering if we can change that language. And, and, and it, and it goes on to say, and to the elected officials of both the county and the city. I'm wondering if we can have that language reflect the language in the resolution in where, where it would say, not provide quarterly updates, but rather provide updates no less than quarterly, which is the language that was used in the resolution. So I would like to make, I guess, a friendly amendment to the scope of services.
If I could just discuss about the scope of, of work. I know Vice President Reese has indicated not only that you have one concern about adding in the resolution, but Vice President Reese had several things in the scope of service, scope of work that she wanted to have discussed. And I think once we start discussing that, and then, you know, we bring, we, we need to give everybody an opportunity to bring in their suggestions. So I had wrote a note, we certainly are not going to put the scope of work to bed. We're gonna hopefully pass this resolution, continue to look at the scope of work. And then if need be, to have more frequent contact with 3CDC. But I would, I would prefer not to look at the scope, add this in the resolution, because then it, it just opens up everything that you, I'm sure you have some other ideas in the scope of work. So I'd like for us to pass a resolution. And if there's a need to change some things, we have the, we have the ability to do that. This is such a major project. So I'd like to go on and pass a resolution and then make it congruent with what's in the scope of work.
And Madam President, if I, if I could, I, I think that what is in the resolution is policy direction. I think it even says in the result, resolution clauses, policy direction to the administration as we, as we develop an MOU with 3CDC with the city to make sure that, that the MOU is reflective of the policy direction. I think the things that are in there related to inclusion, ensuring that the Convention Center Hotel is priority one, and even to the point of the term of the agreement and the frequency of meetings, that I would take that as a charge to ensure that that is in the MOU that is ultimately affected. I don't think that that particular item is one that would be problematic for either the city or 3CDC. So I, I think that's something we can just flesh out as we develop the MOU.
Madam President.
Yes.
And I think also it'd be good for us to get clarity because if the hotel is not built on the Millennium site and it's going to be built on the site where the parking is, that's owned by the Port Authority. This statement, I mean, all the things that I know we want to do, because we want ownership, partnership, ownership, majority, minority. But I'd like the administrator maybe can report back to us on this statement because if we, if this statement is true, then they'll come back and say, we couldn't do it. It says in a statement here. It says in a statement here, the port said, "There will be no equity in the hotel from the private sector because the current plan calls for the port to own it." Now, they already own the land. So that's, those are the kinda things. I know we didn't have a lot of time. And I, and I, like I had told the administrator, I would be okay. We wrote a letter to FIFA and let them know we're gonna get the hotel because I do believe we're gonna do the hotel, we gotta do it. But this type of stuff, that's where I'm peeling back the onion because the only way we're gonna do it different is if we really peel back the onion. Because if we don't, we'll be doing the same public projects we always do. We say we try, we got a goal. We tried to get it, but we've never had an ownership thing. But this thing made, it startled me. So that's why I was really focused on the scope of work. And if we have another shot at the scope of work, I mean, that would be great. And I'm, you know, I'm hopeful, would love to be supportive if we could get something in the scope of work. Not to hold up today, but something that they gotta come back or something in 20 days with a scope of work and we can move forward or something. I just wanted to put that on the table as well.
And what document is that one right there, Vice President Reese? No, the other one. Is that a, was it in, in the Inquirer or something?
Yeah, it was, it was in the Business Courier. This was the argument in 2019. And we're talking about the same land. Nothing could happen because we had COVID, obviously. But this is where they're saying, put the hotel. So I just wanna make sure, you know, like all these intricacies. I don't want anybody to come back, oh, I didn't look at it, we couldn't do it, we couldn't do it. I wanted to get all that out on the table and understood at the beginning if possible.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a motion from the.
I have some point of clarity. So the resolution refers to the scope of work being attached to the resolution.
Yes.
So.
We have a scope of work, yeah.
Okay. And so is the scope of work going to be attached to the resolution, I guess, is my question. Okay.
You have it right there, that's, yeah.
Okay.
Madam President, that's why I have to abstain today. I cannot support this today because of the scope of work is, you know, my concern. I just wanna get that out there so people have a clear understanding.
Thank you. Thanks for the discussion, both of you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution. If I leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Abstain.
Thank you so much. We will move forward to our regular agenda items. We have our engineer who is here without any orange.
Thank you for pointing that out. I apologize, I, I didn't get the memo that today was the day.
You're fine, yeah.
First item we have today, item number one, is a, just a report to the board regarding a request for a vacation portion of an unimproved fee right of way for Willow Road in Sims Township. That was requested. We have submitted a report to you that we have found that is, it is right of way that can be vacated. We have informed the requestor of what the necessary requirements are. We've sent him a letter. And the next step is, is in their court. So this is just a report for your information.
Any questions or comments about item one? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item one. Second. Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number two is a resolution authorizing a joint agreement between Hamilton County and the city of the Village of Indian Hill for the construction and maintenance of improvements to Bloom Road Bridge, Project 501904. The total project cost for this is $1,460,000. This received a 50% grant from OPWC in the amount of $730,044. The remaining 50% of the project is being split 50-50 between County Engineers Office and the Village of Indian Hill. So the county's expense is $365,000. This will allow Indian Hill to go to bid and us to transfer the money to them as the project is built.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Can I make a motion to adopt item number two?
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas. Commissioner Reese. Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three is a resolution determining necessity for and concluding that no land or property will be damaged and determining that the public convenience and welfare require the 2022 resurfacing program located in Anderson, Colrain, Columbia, Crosby, Dalhuy, Green, and Miami Townships. This is our annual resurfacing program. Our engineer's estimate is $4,115,000, which will be paid for out of the road and bridge fund. This will allow us to take this project out to bid.
Thank you. Can we possibly maybe have a historical, not perspective, but if you can give us something on like the year before, who was on the list for annual resurfacing?
Which roads, which?
Yeah.
Townships?
What townships?
I'm assuming they were the same ones. We typically spread the cap, the, the resurfacing project over the entire county and try to hit all of our various townships. We do a, a program where we evaluate our pavement conditions and we try to hit our worst roads first. So they may not always hit in the same townships, but we try to distribute the, the resurfacing program countywide. And I do have the list of roads this year, if, if you would like me to read those off.
You don't have to go through all of those, but if you could send it to me, that would be great.
Sure, that's great.
Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, I was at a meeting yesterday and road resurfacing came up, interestingly, because it generally does not. But there was some concern from one of the residents on the call related to resurfacing when you have a road and you're, you're servicing on top of it and the impact of that added pavement to the stormwater system and the rain.
The drainage and the.
And the drainage. And so I had never really thought much about that. And, but I wanted to ask you the question, is that a consideration when you're doing resurfacing, this impact to the drainage of the streets and the curbing and, and all that other stuff?
Excellent question. And yes, it is. Typically, our resurfacing, when we say resurfacing, we're not adding onto the top. We typically go in and remove two inches of pavement and place two inches back. But in our resurfacing program, we do look at all the catch basins, the, the drainage patterns for everything, the ditches to make sure they're all functioning properly. The one thing we don't wanna do is negatively impact any, any sort of drainage. So in these projects, we do not raise the elevation of where the road is now because that causes a lot of other problems like tying into driveways and all of that. But yes, drainage is, is an important consideration on all of our resurfacing projects.
So this particular resident lives in the city of Cincinnati. Do you know if they have a similar policy or approach?
I would assume that is, they, they do this, a similar thing. I can't speak to whether they grind and resurface. That's, that's typically what it is in more urbanized areas because, like I say, as you raise the elevation of the road, you have to chase driveways and tie-ins and all of that. So we try to keep our, our final elevation the same all the time. That's why we take pavement off and we put it back on.
That certainly makes sense. And I think there's maybe then a misconception about road resurfacing and how it does add a lot. And I didn't know any better, so I'm, I'm glad you're here.
Yes. In, in the past, probably 15 years ago, a lot of our rural roads that don't have curb on them and, and drainage, we would actually just add asphalt on because it gives it more strength, more, more pavement section. But now, with a lot of things curbed, we, we definitely don't add to it. We try to keep everything where it's at.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I learned something from that also. Any additional discussion? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt item number three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is a resolution granting the name change of Hunter's Run Court to Hunter's Run Lane under authority of the ORC Section 554104. This was, a public hearing was held earlier in January on this. This is supported by the Sims Township Board of Trustees, Hamilton County Regional Planning, and all of the residents along that street.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
No, we spoke, I got all my answers in the public hearing, thank you.
Great. I make a motion to adopt item four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas. Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. And you'll let me know when we wear orange for the Super, for the Super Bowl, right? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, see you later. I got a dress, an orange dress.
That's not a wrong.
Yeah. Um, let's see, we have consent agenda items, item five through 16. And is there, are there any comments or questions? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt items five through 16.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. With no further business to come before the commission, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dimas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.